Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. I'd like to call this meeting at the Brooklyn City Councilor Order. Don, can you please call the roll?
Sure. Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Groddick.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shockey.
Here.
Andy Silhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Bell Bear.
Here.
Would you please stand and join with the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. This time, we'll turn it over to Councilwoman Bell Bear.
Excuse me. Jesus, during your ministry on earth, you showed your power and caring by healing peoples of all ages and stations of life from physical, mental, and spiritual ailments. Be present now to people who need your loving touch because of mental health issues caused by the demands of COVID-19. We ask with all the power in our minds and our hearts that you keep this new coronavirus from continuing to spread and people decide in their hearts to become vaccinated so the virus does not continue to spread unabated. Our hearts and minds are filled with praise and thanksgiving for your generous assistance, a loving, protecting God. Amen. Thank you.
Just a reminder, the next council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 12th, not on Monday due to the Columbus Day holiday. So again, our next council meeting will be October 12th on Tuesday. At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience is in the safe for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward and state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer. There's no one? We'll now have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening with the Finance Committee. We did meet at 6:15 prior to the start of this council meeting and discuss the following. Resolution 2021-28 is on second reading. This authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with Denise Zappa for the purchase of certain real property known as 7468 Memphis Avenue. And the purchase price on this is $125,000. And then, as sister ordinance to this is Resolution 2021-29, authorizes the mayor to enter an agreement to purchase the property right next to 7468 Memphis Avenue. It's a vacant piece of property, and that's for $52,000. And the last item that we discussed is Resolution 2021-30 is on second reading. And this is to authorize the mayor to enter into a job retention and creation grant agreement with MBW Incorporated. They were here with us on our last committee of the whole meeting, and also, we discussed this in our prior council meeting as well. And this is on second reading. Also, as an update in finance, the council will meet for a budget work session this coming Monday, October 4th. And so, we will begin discussing the budget for 2022. We'll now move on to our Public Safety and Environmental Committee. Councilwoman Ryan Shockey.
The Public Safety and Environmental Committee will be meeting directly after tonight's city council meeting. We'll be discussing ordinances 2021-20 and 2021-21 regarding regulations for transient and short-term rentals. That ends my report.
Thank you. Next up is Recreation Board, Councilwoman Tansky.
Thank you. The Brooklyn Recreation Department presents a safety town trick-or-treat event on October 21st from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Brooklyn Safety Town in the Grand Pavilion behind the City Hall. Children up to age 12 come in their best costumes, enjoy trick-or-treat prizes, activities, and more. Cost for residents $3. Non-resident $5. Visit brooklynohmirec.com to pre-register and purchase your ticket something. Accepting canned food donations for Hardest for Hunger. Costume accessories such as toy guns, knives, axes, and so forth will not be allowed at this event. The Winter Youth Basketball for grades 3 to 6 begins on November 2021 through March 2022. There will be an eight-game regular season plus the playoffs with one to two weekly practices. Voluntary coaches needed. Let us know at registration if you're interested. Practices and home games will be held at Brooklyn Middle School Fieldhouse. Way games will be held at Middleburg Heights, Brook Park, North Olmsted, North Ridgeville, Columbia Station, Fairview Park, Westlake, Strongsville. Throughout all practices, games, the Brooklyn Rec Center staff, coaches, and other communities will be following the standards and guidelines set forth by ODH, OHSAA, and CCBH regarding gameplay facility safety. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on October 18th in the Rec Center media room at 7:00 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on Thursday, September 16th to discuss the following. A variance request from Bright Electric Sign for a sign package for a Swenson's Drive-In at 7414 Brook Park Road. A request from Richard Rusnick and Kelly Riley for 108-square-foot variance to the allowable 144-square-foot for an accessory structure at 9720 Memphis Villa Boulevard. And a request from Mikhail and Keely Shilow for 144-square-foot variance to the allowable 144-square-foot for an accessory structure at 4501 Tiedemann Road. All three of these were approved by the board. The next Board of Zoning Appeals meeting will take place on October 21st at 6:00 p.m. We'll now move on with the Planning Commission, Councilwoman Groddick.
Thank you. Our next Planning Commission meeting will be Wednesday, October 6th at 6:00 p.m. We currently have two items on our agenda. The first is a request from Lad Sign &amp; Lighting Inc. for an illuminated channel letter sign for the pet supplies at 4808 Ridge Road. And the second is a request from Spirit Halloween for a temporary banner sign for five weeks for a temporary business, Spirit Halloween, at 4790 Ridge Road. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our School Board Liaison, Councilwoman Bell Bear.
Thank you. The school district is going to start their Strategic Planning Committee in October. Dr. Kalaris is looking for community members that would be interested in being part of that committee. If interested, please contact Dr. Ted Kalaris at 216-485-8112. And that completes my report.
Thank you. The committee in the whole met this evening as well following the Finance Committee meeting and discussed the following. Resolution 2021-25. This places a moratorium on the acceptance and processing granting of applications for small-box discount stores and the issuance of such approval in the city of Brooklyn. And this will, if adopted, will be extended through 180 days after the adoption of the legislation. The committee did recommend that council adopt. Next was Resolution 2021-27. This places a moratorium on the operation, the acceptance, and processing, granting of applications for short-term residential real estate rentals, or commonly referred to Airbnb's, or ARBOs, et cetera. And that would extend through 180 days after legislation passes as well. The committee recommended that council not adopt that piece of legislation. As was mentioned by Mrs. Ryan Shockey, ordinance 2021-20 and 2021-21, which deal with the transient rentals that I just discussed, will be discussed in the Safety Committee meeting following this meeting. The next was ordinance 2021-22, enacting Section 14918, school district employees of the ordinance in the city of Brooklyn. And this would exempt employees of the Brooklyn City School Board, District Board of Education from the Civil Service Commission and the oversight from them. One of the members of that Civil Service Commission, Mr. Magery, was at our last meeting, council meeting, and discussed this at length. And so, this is on second reading. And then, the new item that we have in the legislation this evening is ordinance 2021-25. And this would create Chapter 727 Commercial Security. And this would require our large retailers to adopt the loss prevention security measures. And there's a staggered plan for the, depending on how large your store is, for the number of hours that a loss prevention security individual would need to be in that store. And we plan on discussing this in the Safety Committee as well this evening. The committee in the whole does meet following the Finance Committee before all regularly scheduled council meetings, and all are welcome to attend. That takes place right here in council chambers. Well, now, we'll move on with reports of council. Begin this evening with Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to give a special thanks to our housing manager, Nicole Blunk, on her handling of some residents' complaints. Nicole was quick to respond to these complaints and did an amazing job. It was greatly appreciated. I would also like to welcome the following new Brooklyn hires, including Michael Perez, Brooklyn Police Department, David Allen, firefighter and paramedic, Brianna Molar, Police Department, and Rachel Laskowski, Secretary Supervisor for the Brooklyn Recreation Center. I would like to, I would look forward to meeting and working with all of you. Best wishes and congratulations to Andy Udris, Director of Economic Development, who will be retiring after nearly six years of service with the Brooklyn City, the city of Brooklyn, and Police Officer Chris Baxter, who served in the city for nearly 21 years. The city of Brooklyn was well-served with all your dedication, hard work, and service to our community. Enjoy your retirement. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Groddick.
Thank you. First, thank you, Mr. Tansky, for reviewing all of that. Those were new hires and some retirees that I wasn't aware of. So, thank you for sharing that with everybody. Today was something of an end of an era in Cleveland baseball. With very little fanfare, the Cleveland Indians closed out their home season with a win today. As most of us know, next year, our same hometown team will be known as the Cleveland Guardians. As a teacher of diverse students, I understand that names are important markers of who we are and where we belong. I hope it won't take long for Clevelanders of all ages to feel that the Guardians belong to us and belong here in Cleveland, just as the Cleveland Indians will always be part of our baseball history. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Groddick picks up. This is Ryan Shockey.
Thank you. Tomorrow, September 28th, is the fourth Tuesday of the month. That means Bubba's Yard is back. They will be distributing free, fresh produce to qualifying households. Distribution starts at 3:30 at St. Elias Church next to the Senior Center, Community Center on Memphis. Distribution continues until 5:00 or when food runs out. Keep Brooklyn Beautiful is hosting our next cleanup this Sunday, October 3rd, from 9:00 to 11:00 at Memorial Park. We'll also have a cleanup on Saturday, October 16th out of the Home Depot parking lot. We're partnering with Carmo Councilman DeVito, who borders the Brick Park Ward over there to clean up along Brook Park Road. We hope he can join us at one of our last couple of cleanups this year. And finally, tomorrow is National Voter Registration Day. I challenge you to look up your voter registration to ensure it's accurate and active in recognition of National Voter Registration Day tomorrow. It's fast and easy to do online from your home. Go online to voterlookup.ohio sos.gov to look up your registration today. October 4th is the last day to register to vote to be eligible to vote in the November 2nd election this year. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Silver.
Thank you. Only got one item. The pilot project for the LED streetlights. Sorry, I sound like a broken record. This has just been, like, taking forever and ever and ever. The locations have been picked out. Now, we're waiting for the invoice from First Energy. That got here. Now, we gotta pay it to do the pilot project. That should happen in the next two to three weeks. Once it does, I'll let you know the location, and hopefully, we can get this thing rolling once and for all. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. In case you didn't see it, there was a very nice article yesterday in The Plain Dealer, and it's also available on cleveland.com about our recycling project. I would like to make a clarification. When the reporter asked if we are going to continue to monitor the carts, of course, I said we have no plans at this time. But I just wanted to let everybody know that it's still very important that we continue to give it our best efforts to recycle correctly. We still have some room for improvement, and we want to continue down that path. Our portable speed trailer has arrived, and it's currently stationed in front of the high school. This trailer was purchased through our Safe Rocks to School grant. And the reason we asked for a portable unit was to provide some flexibility, and we'll have the ability to be able to deploy this in other parts of the city. And Chief, I know that there are numerous trouble spots, but when we do start moving it around, if you could make Southwood, make sure that Southwood is up there. It's pretty bad on Southwood. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Early voting begins next Tuesday, October 5th. You can submit your application at any time, but this is the first day that ballots will be mailed to voters. And October 5th also begins the opportunity, if you'd like to vote in person at the Board of Elections. From October 5th to the 8th, it's Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And also, October 12th to the 22nd. Now, they are closed on Monday, October 11th for Columbus Day. Then, they have Saturday voting on October 30th from 8:00 to 4:00, and Sunday, October 31st from 1:00 to 5:00, and then, Monday, November 1st from 8:00 to 2:00. So, there are plenty of opportunities for those who want to take advantage of either voting by mail or going down in person if you don't want to go to the polls on Election Day. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell Bear.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate Councilwoman Kathy Pucci and our Service Director, Mr. Verba, on the wonderful article in The Plain Dealer. It was all about their hard work concerning the recycling program. It will have a lasting effect on our controlled recyclables. I also can only appreciate all the hard work they did in getting up early and following Kathy, following those garbages and checking to make sure everything was done right. First of all, I wouldn't be afraid of seeing a skunk or a possum or something in my garbage, and then you guys are checking the recyclables. But I do appreciate that, and I think it made Brooklyn shine. And I thank you, Mr. Verba and Kathy. I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer, but I am going to talk a little bit about the virus. One in 10 Americans reported an increase in substance use in 2020 because of the pandemic. The number of people reporting serious consideration of suicide has doubled since 2018. 71% of parents believe the pandemic disruption to routines, schooling, and sense of safety have taken a toll on the mental health of at least one of their children. 64% of parents believe the pandemic's description will have a lasting effect on their child's development. From 2019 to 2020, symptoms of anxiety disorders tripled and depressive disorders quadrupled. The number of people seeking mental health care is up, while the availability of providers is shrinking. Many providers could hardly keep up with the demand. It ranges from children to senior citizens. The elderly population suffered from some of the most severe impacts of any age group during the pandemic, both physically and mentally. More than 78% of Americans who died from the COVID between February and October 2020 were 65 years or older, according to the CDC, and the mental health implications during the quarantine period were dramatic for the age group. Data also indicates that people with schizophrenia and other serious mental illnesses have also been hard-hit by the pandemic. Individuals with schizophrenia are nearly 10 times more likely to contract COVID-19 and are nearly three times more likely to die from it if they do fall ill. Lastly, it may be years before we really know the impact that this COVID has done to our everyday life. I'd also like to say, I talked to Kathy and Karen at the Senior, well, not really Karen, but Kathy, at the Senior Center. And the Senior Center is doing the best they can, and the girls do a great job. I do see, if you get a chance to go there and see some of the crafts that the seniors have made, they are for sale. I did purchase a beautiful little arrangement, and they're very inexpensive, and it does help the Senior Center out. So, if you get a chance, you know, go over there and support them. There are a couple things happening there at the Senior Center. There's a Fall Reef class that's starting this September 30th, and the cost is only $10, and that includes all your supplies. There's going to be a free cooking demonstration October 20th from 11:00 to noon, and you'll learn how to make Italian wedding soup with Vista Springs Assisted Living Chef Myron. They ask that you actually sign up before Monday, October 4th. So, you can always call the Senior Center at 654222. They're going to have a Veterans Day ceremony and pinning. Friday, November 5th this year, with the support of our firefighters and the hospice of the Western Reserve, the Center will have a ceremony to honor all of our veterans with a special pin, and light refreshments will be served for their service. All Brooklyn veterans are welcome. Please call the Senior Center to reserve your spot by October 28th. And lastly, the snow removal sign-up. It'll be here before we know it. Starting date was September 8th, and it goes through September 30th, so you still have time. So, if you are new to the program, please bring proof of income and proof of residency when you apply. Those who were in the program last year will receive a renewed application in the mail, and then, they have till September 30th to come in and pay and pick up a sign. Fee for all participants this season is $40 after September 30th. And after September 30th, there will be a late fee, and you can't beat that price. And that pretty much completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell Bear. Just one item. You should have received the Brooklyn News in the Mail this week, and it's a great publication. It says a lot about what's going on in our city. One of the items I wanted to bring to your attention was the update of the City Center project. And there's a couple of pictures of drawings of what it's going to look like. But also, there's an article at the bottom where you have a chance to participate in the decorations of that. So, if you have some old photos of Brooklyn going all the way back to before 480 was running through our city up to 10 years ago, if you could either email copies of that to photos@brooklynohio.gov, or you can mail them here to the city. And we're going to use some of those photos inside the interior decoration of the new building. And so, it's a really cool way to remember our history as we move forward. And also, I would encourage you, if you just threw this on the side when you came in, you're going to read through it. There's a lot of good information about what's going on in the city, and the administration has a great job putting that together. So, take advantage of that. And with that, we will move on to the report of the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Two quick things. One, I just want to remind everyone, this Thursday, the Heritage Home Program will be hosting an event at the Fire Station Community Room at 6:00 p.m. They're going to be talking about ways to improve your exterior. And if you haven't had a chance to check out Heritage Home Program, if you're just looking to explore ideas, it's a free service to you. They'll bring out a contractor, and they'll look at your project. They'll help you get estimates. And that's, again, that's in the newsletter that came out last week with information there. So, we've had a lot of success this past year with Heritage Home Program, looking at the reports. And they also provide low-interest loans to residents. So, check it out. And then, the other topic I wanted to address was the zoning update. It's been a little bit since we've talked about the zoning update. On October 26th at 7:00 p.m. will be our next public meeting on that. I'll announce that at every meeting until then. And right now, we've been working on a more user-friendly website for residents and businesses to follow the project along. So, that should be launching in the next week or so. And again, that's October 26th at 7:00 p.m. At this point, we're looking at doing a participation Zoom meeting. Because of the Delta variant, not everybody's comfortable with coming to public meetings. And so, this allows us to have the best of both worlds. We give the presentation, but also allows us to do Q&amp;A while we're hosting the meeting as well. So, look forward to everyone's continued participation in that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one director's report this evening from Mr. Udris.
Good evening. Yes, I would just like to provide a brief report on the financial statements through August. For the general fund, overall revenues are 91% of estimated amount, 32% more than prior year, largely built on an increase in income taxes, as mentioned in my email and detailed. Most of this increase was due to net, one-time net profit payments that we received for 2021. On the commitment side, commitments are 66% of the overall budget amount, 3% more than August of last year, so we're treading pretty much consistent with prior year. We've received, as noted previously, we received $558,000 in American recovery, American rescue plan funding. Of this amount, we've shifted $322,000 from the general fund to the local fiscal recovery fund, which was set up for the use of these funds, and we've allocated public safety personnel costs, as we've discussed previously. I'll allocate the remaining amount in September. It'll be part of the September financial report. I also included an analysis on estimated revenue loss impact as it relates to COVID. Due to the declaration of emergency being ended by the governor in June, this will be my last estimated revenue loss update as it relates to COVID-19. Gross loss is approximately $2.6 million. Net loss, taking into account subsidies that we received from the federal government and other sources, are $1.1 million. For the general fund, the general fund impacted estimated revenue loss of about $2.4 million. Net loss to the general fund, $854,000. And we received our distributions from Rita for September. Our overall distributions are 9% higher than last year, $112,000. Excluding any one-time payments I received in 2020 and 2021, the amount is actually $172,000 more than September of last year, largely built on an increase in withholding of approximately $160,000. That concludes my report. Are there any questions from City Council? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Udris. Look forward to Monday.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's some confusion over there. I'm just going to repeat the times I said. So the Heritage Home Program is this Thursday at 6:00 PM. And then I talked about the zoning board advisory meeting. That is not until October 26th at 7:00 PM. I don't know if I said that wrong, or if there's confusion down there.
Zoom.
Second.
The planning meeting is a Zoom meeting. The Heritage Program takes place in the Fire Station Community Room.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. We'll now move on with legislation. For this evening, the first item on the agenda is Resolution 2021-25. And I misspoke earlier. This legislation, if adopted, would only carry through the end of this year. This one was not changed. So this places a moratorium on acceptance, oh, I misspoke again. This is the next one we did not change. This one does go through the end. This one goes through, this is for 180 days if we do an office. This is placing a moratorium on the acceptance and processing granting of applications for zoning, occupancy, and/or building permit approvals for small box discount stores and the issuance of such approvals in the city of Brooklyn, Ohio. The original piece of legislation reads through December 31st, 2021. I'm going to propose that we amend this to say, placing a moratorium on the acceptance and processing granting of applications for zoning, occupancy, and/or building permit approvals for small box discount stores and the issuance of such approvals in the city of Brooklyn, Ohio for a period of 180 days and declaring an emergency. So I'll make a motion to amend.
Second.
To amend. Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Silverz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Any comments or questions on this?
Move to adopt as amended.
Second.
To adopt as amended.
We have to introduce by all of us to suspend the rules. That's good.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yeah.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Silverz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
To adopt. Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yeah.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Silverz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
The motion is adopted. Thank you. Next up is Resolution 2021-27, placing a moratorium on the operation of and the acceptance of and processing of granting of applications for zoning, occupancy, and/or building permit approvals for short-term residential real estate rentals in the city of Brooklyn. And this one would go through December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency. This is on third reading.
Are we going to take a vote?
You have a motion to amend?
Yeah, motion. Motion to.
Motion to adopt. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt. Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
No.
Ron Van Kirk.
No.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
No.
Andy Silverz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
No.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Thank you.
The moratorium is not adopted. Next up is, the next several items are on second reading. Resolution 2021-28, authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Denise Zappa, trustee of the Zappa Family Trust, for the purchase of certain real property known as 7468 Memphis Avenue. Resolution 2021-29, authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with the estate of Louis Fador, I think I got it right this time, for the purchase of certain real property known as V.L. at Memphis Avenue. Next up is Resolution. Oh. I did see that. Right. So on the resolution, thank you, Don. Resolution 2021-29, the administration is asking that we adopt by suspension of the rules this evening.
Introduced by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
Suspend the rules. Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Silverz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
To adopt. Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yeah.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Silverz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
As was mentioned in my committee report, the purchase price for that is the appraised price of $52,000. Next up, on second reading, is Resolution 2021-30, authorizing the mayor to enter into a job retention and creation agreement with MBW Incorporated. Ordinance 2021-20, on second reading, amending various sections of the codified ordinances to provide for the regulation of transient rentals. And lastly, on second reading, ordinance 2021-22, enacting Section 149.18, school district employees of the codified ordinances city of Brooklyn, in order to exempt employees of the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education from the Civil Service Commission oversight. And then one item under new business this evening on first reading is ordinance 2021-25, creating Chapter 727 Commercial Security to require large retailers to adopt loss prevention security measures, as on first reading. That concludes our agenda this evening. Does anyone on council, the mayor, or the directors have anything to add?
Ron, just for clarification, I know Councilwoman Pucci liked the letter to the school union regarding 2021-22. Would you like that before the last reading, or is after the passage of that ordinance mine?
That's a good question. I think, my opinion is that we're on the path to do this because we have not had, I don't know, cooperation from the schools when it comes to this, so I think the outcome is inevitable. So I'm fine. I guess I would leave that up to Mr. Butler's discretion. I guess if they have it ahead of time, if they have some sort of objection or concern, they can voice that opinion. I guess that's the advantage to providing them with notice sooner. Does anyone else have any thoughts on it?
I mean, the legislation, if it is adopted, it will be 30 days before it would go into practice, correct? There's no, there's no emergency clause in the, at least in the title.
I will check. May I check that?
Sure.
Thank you.
In the meantime, while he's looking at that, I'll just let everyone know, once we do adjourn this meeting, the Public Safety Committee meeting, or our committee will meet to discuss the ordinances in regards to the transient rentals, as well as the prevention and security measures for the big-box retailers. So you're welcome to stay for that if you so desire. And once Mr. Butler's able to answer that question, we will.
Do you know, there's no, there's no reason for the emergency that's been placed in